Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is now 6:30, and I will call this special budget work session of the Burnsville City Council to order. We have two items on the agenda for this evening. We have a parks plan, and then we have reports from our departments. And the departments we'll hear from today is the IT department, the city clerks, and the finance department. But the first item on the agenda is the parks plan. But before we get to the parks plan, the city clerk note that Councilmember Keely and Councilmember Workman are absent, and tonight's meeting is being conducted both in person and online. Members of the public may attend in person if they like, or the public can also watch this meeting online at burnsvillemn.gov/meetings or Comcast Channel 16 or 859. The public can also participate through Zoom by joining us at zoom.us/join. More information is available on our meeting webpage and in the council agenda packet. So the first item on the agenda is the parks plan. Our Parks Recreation and Facilities Director, Garrett Beck, is presenting, and he will introduce our guests. Garrett, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I have the pleasure this evening to be sharing the results of our Parks Plan study that we have completed. And joining me this evening in the process is our consultants from Confluence to my immediate right, Terry Monerik, and to his right, Mark Valencia, who is with New Publica. And then also behind me is J.J. Ryan, our Recreation and Facilities Superintendent, together in this group along with dozens of staff put in countless hours going through this work and just super excited to be able to share it tonight with council and with the community. A little background, in December of 2022, council directed staff to engage our community, to make sure that we were connecting with underserved populations, and to make sure that they have a voice in what we have in our park system and how we manage it. And so we had last connected with our community in 2017 about our parks plan, and so this was an updated engagement opportunity for us. And it also was an opportunity to really do a deep dive into our park inventory and assets and to condition them, and we'll go into that more later. But we really have a number of new improvements to the 2024 Parks Plan from our 2027 Parks Plan. So a little history, the majority of our park infrastructure came into existence in the 1980s and 1990s. We have been doing some replacements and some new items since then, but the bulk of our park system is really in that 30- to 40-year years old at this point. Since that time, we had the initial park plan in the 1980s. We had a park plan update in the early 2000s, and then the 2017 Parks Plan that I mentioned. So this will be our fourth Parks Plan for the park system. And it really allows us to identify the needs and to look at change opportunities in the park system to make sure that we stay relevant in meeting the needs of a changing community and a changing world. With that, I am going to turn it over to Terry with Confluence, and he's going to kind of take us through, along with Mark, kind of what their role was and the engagement piece.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Thank you for the plan. I went through all 402 pages.
And you stayed awake. That's good.
I have lots of questions.
Okay. We're ready for those.
But it was well put together, easy to read, and I like the way it was also laid out, so I know what one and two is and how it informs us with regard to all capital. So I look forward to hearing your report.
Great. Yeah, well, it's really important of us to put together a plan that is usable, right? Not only, you know, most, a lot of plans look good, they have a lot of data, but how do they apply to our CIP? And how do we use that in prioritizing what we need to do in our community? So we really take pride in putting together a plan that really engages the community and then delivers on those priorities for you. So I'm happy that you've gone through it and looking forward to your questions. But the park plan in general, you know, one of the things that Garrett came to us in the beginning was about community engagement and making sure that the community, as it is represented by demographics, is represented in the park system plan. So first and foremost, we wanted to do a thorough community engagement. We brought on New Publica as part of that, and Mark will talk a little bit about some of that engagement in detail. But we really wanted to make sure that we captured what the community was saying, what they felt they were missing, or what they enjoyed, or what they needed in their park system. So that kind of became the priority for how we establish those priorities down the road. We also took a look at, through that process, the existing park infrastructure, what you have in your system today, and there's, Garrett will get into a detailed inventory analysis that we did as part of this process too with the city, to kind of identify that, but also identifying those needs of what maybe weren't in the community, or what, you know, needs to be improved on or enhanced to kind of keep delivering those services to the community. So that was another part of the process. And then through this process, we ended up kind of developing a strategic plan at the end, and that strategic plan kind of has some key moments that really begin to identify some of those things primarily as related to the CIP and how that first set of priorities can happen within those first few years, that low-hanging fruit for sure, but also those key things that need to be identified and prioritize your budget towards those. We also began to look at the idea of the aging infrastructure and obsolete infrastructure, which is really important. What do we replace? What do we get rid of based on programming, based on what people are looking for, those sorts of things? Also, access and connectivity was really important and brought up through the community. People felt it was really important to have trails and connectivity throughout the park. That walkability was important, making sure we're emphasizing that. Also, communication, how people know about what's in the park system, what services you offer, how they find out about it, whether that's through online, or engagement, or signage, or, you know, multiple languages, however that might be. So we identified that as well. Also, intergenerational and flexibility became really important through this, so make sure that everybody's being served, like Parks for All. And then that flexibility over time becomes really important as well, because ideas and thoughts change in what we do in our park systems and what people prioritize. So if you have flexibility built into a park system, then you have the ability to change and adapt quickly and not kind of get behind the curve of what's trending and what people are wanting to do. Then also with community health and wellness is really important, too. So that became one of the other priorities that we began to focus on, and just getting people out, getting them walking, building upon that healthy community. And then sustainability, you know, that's really important, not only financially, but also ecologically, but also in the types of equipment and the types of amenities that we begin to offer. And then funding and revenue ideas as well for how we can begin to move that forward. So if you want to go to the next, I guess I can do that. So I'm going to pass it over to Mark, and Mark can talk a little bit about the community engagement. What we felt was really important was that we, like I said, hit the community as represented in the last Parks Plan. I think it was a pretty good job of reaching out to the community, but maybe it wasn't represented as well as it could have been, so we brought on New Publica, and Mark will talk a little bit about that process.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of city council. We were both professionally and personally passionate about the Parks Plan and bringing essential underrepresented community voices, opinions, and thoughts to the city for the future plans of the park. So as you can see, a significant increase in engagement happened versus 2017, and that was amplified and made more inclusive by, very simply put, we went where people are. We went where East African families were. We went where Asian, Latina, even Russian families were. We went where communities of color were. We utilized a whole variety of methods, but going where they are isn't just physical, it is also cultural, linguistic. It is places of confidence, places and times of respect. For example, we did a lot of intercepts, and sometimes multiple occasions, and would have a very short survey or conversation with a mom, a dad, kids, grandparents, whoever was at those parks. We did focus primarily on high-density and high-diversity park neighborhoods so that we would get to those voices that regularly are less represented. We knew that sometimes communities of color or immigrant communities may lack the comfort as well as sometimes the trust for institutions or government, so we tried to build relationships. Some of these intercepts could have taken 30 seconds, some may have been five, 10 minutes long. They really did vary based on the comfort that they had. But we went to community where they are in schools. We went to the elementary schools during parent-teacher conferences, and the schools are very diverse, as you know. The youth are more diverse than the adult population of the city. We went to the high school and participated and did some surveying and a few classes with the help of a coach. We reached out to the ERG high school groups and asked them to fill out a survey or give us some thoughts. We went to Gateway STEM Academy, where the population of those students is basically all Somali and East African. We went twice there. We did it in different ways there because we needed the Somali and East African input. And we did some fun games for children first through fifth grade where they would color their favorite parts of the park. So very simple, it's not quite a survey, it's really an activity for them, both in person where the teachers passed it out, as well as they were put in their backpacks just in case they would come back and they would come back to the school and fill it out. We did a couple additional questions for fun to some of the older students from sixth through eighth grade to ask them, what kinds of ideas do you have for what the parks could have in the future? And we got good responses. Some of them were very straightforward, just bigger parks, more playground, and some that were really insightful and kind of matched sometimes the adults. Answers like, could we have more bathrooms, et cetera? And I would just say that we reached all communities as well as we could. We also went to churches. We went to Christiana School Church, and we did it in Spanish and Somali and other languages as needed. We brought navigators, and some of our firm staff is BIPOC-owned staffed and led. I'd like to share that we did this in multiple languages. We had four distinct digital or paper methods for collecting the information, and Terry, you'll expound on that, and then we can add some more questions later.
Okay. Sounds good. So as Mark mentioned, we did do online engagement as well. We actually found through the pandemic that online engagement actually works really well. A lot of people don't like to leave their home at 6 o'clock, at 7 o'clock at night to come to a meeting, and they'd sooner just jump online and be able to join. So online engagement gives you that flexibility to be able to engage at any time of the day that you want, whenever you have free time. So we use a tool called Social Pinpoint that allows us to be able to do online mapping. This picture is an example of that. And online mapping, the yellow boxes or little cloud icons are comments. The red are what people see negative within the parks. The blue are what they see positive, and then the purple are just ideas or thoughts that they might have in the parks. So that allows us to be able to look at that. We also did the same survey and the same short survey and visioning survey online, and they were in multiple languages. We actually offered more than just Somali and Latino. We offered a variety of other languages, too, because the program allows us that ability, so people could actually engage that way as well. We also had what's called an idea board where people could post images and thoughts of what they might want to do within the parks as well. So all those kind of four techniques as part of that online engagement really helped us to gather a lot more information. We actually took a lot of the surveys and digitally entered them in as well into that same survey, so we had a good collection and kind of data source of all the surveys that were done digitally. So that's all been recorded as well, and we'll be following up with a secondary appendices that has all the raw engagement data. So if you ever want to dig through that, too, you'll have that as well. We'll be compiling that in the next day or so, we'll be finishing that. But what came out was people began to identify the park amenities they enjoyed the most. The playgrounds really were up front, the beaches were important, the health and wellness with the trails and all the activities related to the trails and activity getting out. A lot of your events, international festival and some of your concerts in the parks, your Firemuster Festival and Party in the Plaza. So a variety of events became, were very popular and identified throughout the process by a number of people. We also noticed that people enjoy the dog parks, they like the nature areas, so Allo Magnet was really popular, and then also, you know, the skate park, the splash pad, the golf course, and the ice center as well. Some of the park locations that resonated the most, it was one of the questions we asked, you can kind of see this identified by the larger yellow dot indicates more people identified that park as their park that they really like to go to. So you can kind of see how that spread out to the city. The one thing that's common here is most of these are community parks, so they do have something more to offer than other smaller parks do, so they have some kind of attraction, whether it's a skate park, a pickleball court, a splash pad, you know, a variety of different things within the parks that they like to go to and come to. So this begins to identify that, and there's a listing, too, as part of this, where you can see of all the different parks that were kind of the top parks that people tended to come to. And then some of the key things that came out of the process were the engagement themes, that the parks are very clean, very safe, and provide a variety of options to everybody. The other one was that we need a little more attention to some of the popular things like sport courts, basketball courts, those sorts of things, maybe some additional pickleball courts, and then also permanent restrooms, that became another one as well, as well as playground replacements and that trail connectivity. People were really enhancing the trails and connectivity. Other favorite amenities included the trail, the playgrounds, the natural areas, the sports facilities, the splash pads, and of course, the park shelters, which you tend to see more in diverse communities. Families gather differently in different communities, and you tend to see it more in the non-white community where they like to gather as families. So I think that's where the shelters really become popular. I'll pass it on to Garrett now, and he can dive into the inventory and asset management.
So thank you, Terry. The park inventory part of this park plan is the part that, not only did we really up the engagement piece, but we had a significant increase in understanding our park inventory, our conditions and assessments and whatnot. So just real quickly, our park system at a glance, we have 76 parks covering over 1,700 acres. Those are broken down into 21 community parks, 27 neighborhood parks, 19 mini-parks. And then we have natural areas that don't really have assets in them. They're just kind of trees and buffers and whatnot. So the inventory process was a pretty exciting and extensive process. We had about 1,500 assets that we had GIS inventoried prior to starting this new plan that we have. And as you can see, we now have over 4,500 assets that have been inventoried. Basically, that's if it was a constructed item placed in our park, we tried to put a GIS mark on it and assess it, photo it, inventory it, and have it part of this plan. And so you see that there's over 130 different asset types. That's concrete pads, it's shelters, it's the roof of the shelter, it's a playground, it's also the container that goes around the playground, trash cans, things like that, you name it, we have a dot on it. And then with that, once we had a GIS mark on it, then we went through and we had a photo for it that's attached to it, a condition rating, a replacement cost, and the year that it was installed. And I'm just going to, the great thing is, we already had this system in place. It was software we already had, so we were able to work with staff and create, they could go out there with their phone or an iPad and do all the inventorying and whatnot as they walked through the park and whatnot. So it was a really great way of making that happen. So what you see here first is every one of these dots is kind of a reflection of an item in the park, and like I said, there's over 4,500 of them. But you can essentially zoom in on a dot, and that'll take you to a more refined look. So kind of preset up, we're hovering over Neil Park right now, but you can kind of see that there are tennis nets and the court and, you know, the playground over here, and then the curb that goes around it and the trail that connects to the playground. So it is pretty extensive. If you click on this playground, for example, you can see that it's in a condition of two. You can see the year that it was installed, the life expectancy, the approximate replacement cost, and then there's even a photo that is associated with it. So here's what Neil Park looks like, right? So for all 4,500 assets, we have this ability to have this available, and our goal, our plan, we will, as we are replacing this playground, for example, when it's complete, staff will go out there, get a new photo of it, come into the system, update the photo, put the new information about the year it was installed, the replacement costs, any of the notes and things like that. So it is just going to be a really great long-term management system. We can then take the system itself and run reports off of it. So if we wanted to know how many playgrounds we have, what condition they are, the year they are installed, you can customize all those reports, and that's just going to provide us with a great understanding of our park system that we just didn't have before we engaged in this.
And it'll have how many acres for each park?
How many acres for each park? Yes, we can certainly have that included in there as well. Yep.
Because if, once you're going to get into the programming, you need to understand how much acreage you have, whatever the program's going to be.
Yep. All right. So from a, I talked about condition, and that was part of the process, so if a asset was in poor condition and really is something we would not want to have in the park system at this point, it was scored a one. If it is nearing its end of life or it was below a condition that you would like to see in the park system, it was getting a two. If it was, you know, it wasn't new, it wasn't old, it was kind of just a typical asset that was out there, it got a three. And then things that were above average and new received those four and five numbers. Here's a real quick pie chart. I'll dig into this about what it means next, but in general, you can see the yellow, that's the majority of our park system, and the red is the ones, and we'll talk about those specific details here. So at the end of the day, after it was all complete, we have $1.4 million with condition ones of things that we'd really like to get taken care of sooner than later. And then our condition two items are, again, they're not ideal, so they're going to become ones in the next one to three years, in general, is the concept. And then we have the bulk of our park system, as I mentioned, in that condition three at about $46 million. And then we have another 16.4 and 4.5 in condition four and five for a total park asset of approximately $74 million there. And so now that we have this information, the next part, and Terry alluded to it, is, you know, how do we use this park plan to inform our future decision-making for the park system? And that's why what Mark and his team and Terry and whatnot in engaging our community helped us to really, it's going to help us to prioritize how we make decisions going forward. So we heard from the community that they want us to replace our outdated playground equipment as they're reaching end of life, improve that trail connectivity, improve our court conditions, so the playability is what they would expect, improve our signage and wayfinding, and then begin to replace older obsolete buildings and shelters. So I mentioned before, a lot of our park system was constructed in the 80s and 90s, and that's the bulk of our shelters and buildings and whatnot, so they are giving up there in age, so I'm not surprised by that. From a park CIP process, we allocate approximately, right around $2 million a year. Some of it is through the general fund, and then the other parts are through park dedication and whatnot. So we have about $1.5 million that can be allocated for improvements, and then we have about $10 million that can actually be used for the ones and twos, the replacements that we're talking about and whatnot. So I mentioned in the previous slide, we have about $7.4 million of ones and twos, and we have about $10 million programmed over the next five years to help us address that. And again, remember, this was a snapshot in time, it was a moment, so we will have things that are currently threes that'll be moving into that two category over that time and different things that'll come up as well. As far as the next steps for staff, after we present this and get feedback and whatnot, the goal is to begin to prioritize how we replace those ones and twos, and that'll be not only prioritizing which ones are replaced, but determining if they actually do need to be replaced. Some of our assets are obsolete or have been placed in the wrong location, so a decision may be made, and that it is not an asset that we're going to be replacing, we'll just remove it. And there is a cost that comes with the removal process as well, but it is significantly less than the replacement. As we make those decisions, we'll be communicating with the neighborhoods of the parks and the community at large before we go into any of that, and that is something that we've actually been doing for about seven years now since the last plan, and it has served us well. And then we also have a plan to conduct some future studies to continue to add to this plan, to make sure that not only do we understand our inventory about how we're taking care of it and the different types of programming and things that we're providing to the community. So that is the next slide here of putting together in 2025, we have a plan to start looking at our operation and maintenance of the park system, to look at our recreation programming, and to look at our signage and wayfinding in the park system itself. So with that, we will stand for questions and feedback from council.
So when you're looking at operations and maintenance, you have a level of service that you've identified. How is that going to be incorporated? Because I think that's one of the important things that need to be done. And what is our standard?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, you're 100% correct. The operations and maintenance study is, I can't speak for Terry, but I know his firm offers a wide variety of services, and one of them is exactly that. They do have another group that they partner with that looks at operations and maintenance, for example, and how many acres and how many amenities and how many staff do you have, and what does that mean and what does that programming look like? So Mark Ray, our Public Works Director, is going to be working with the park staff team to engage in that survey in 2025 to answer those exact questions that you have.
Because I think when we look at this city manager, Lindberg, and we're going to look at the parks and moving forward with the capital plan, because one of the things we've been lacking is level of service, and we don't have a standard, at least I haven't seen it, of what our parks need to be. You speak to the level of service.
Yeah, it's a snapshot of what you currently have, but as Garrett said, that next plan of the operations, maintenance, and the programming will really identify that, do a benchmarking as well. It'll really begin to identify what's represented within the system compared to other systems, and the level of service that you'll need now and then down the road, five, 10 years from now, based on population growth as well. So that'll be part of that next process.
So the next step, then, is to understand how we're going to define level of service, what our standard is, and then the level of what our standard is, and then the level of service?
Yep.
And then we need to understand programming. And understanding programming, we have to understand how many acres in each park and what programs go into each of those parks.
Yep. And it'll actually look at your existing programming as well and how that's being provided, how it's being used, to the level it's being used at, and what additional programs the community may be identified within our process that can be brought into that, or are there trending type of programs that might, people might be speaking for as well? So it'll remove the obsolete ones that aren't getting much use over time, and then maybe add in some new ones, but provide you that overall level of service that you need with regards to programming as well.
Well, let me tell you, city manager and staff, when we're going to eliminate something, I can tell you when we were going to eliminate some, I think this was back in the late nineties, eliminate some hockey rinks. This room and out there was filled with people. So if we're even going to be thinking of elimination, there has to be some huge engagement of the neighborhood and people who use those assets.
Yeah, that's all part of that process. That would be part of that process in identifying what we heard in this study, but also taking it to another step with regards to your programming, for sure.
So we have a lot of work yet to do.
I think that's a fair summary, Mayor, Council. Staff and our team have done a really great job, particularly, we're talking, from my perspective anyway, leading-edge inventory and condition assessment of our system. That's really great information to help us start a conversation about what our operations and maintenance needs to look like. We have, we have great feedback from the community now from an engagement perspective on the system as a whole. I think that's where the recreation programming component of what Garrett and the team have talked about tonight, in terms of next steps, really also comes in, that that can help us pair what the system looks like from an amenities perspective, what our programming looks like and what the community expects of us. And then, over the course of the next year, as Garrett's talked about, it's our intention to integrate those components into the plan so that we can start to inform a shorter-term conversation about changes in operations and maintenance, continued refinement of what we've called in the past our, our frameworks plan. Said another way, how we're either removing or replacing amenities and communicating that with, with the community along the way. And perhaps most importantly in the short term, making sure that that ten-plus million dollars that you have in your adopted 2024 CIP is realigned with the condition one and two priorities of identifying where are there assets that need to be replaced? And frankly, where are there assets that just need to be removed? I'll, I'll use one specific example, and I might regret it later, but a broken, a broken bench in, or at Crystal Lake Beach. We recognize that as we work through the next year or two and to start talking about vision of the system, that something might change at Crystal Lake Beach. But if we have a broken bench now, likely not a reason to not remove it, right? So as we look at those types of amenities, whether or not it reaches the threshold, the ten thousand dollar threshold that we use for our capital improvement program or not, how are we communicating with the community about what we're doing and why? And in making sure that we're maintaining the assets that we have as best as possible? So I think that the, the short term is really getting a handle on how are we, how are we aligning our current capital plans with the, with the immediate operations and maintenance needs, the condition one and two items that we've talked about? And then longer term, exactly to your point, Mayor, what are the agreed-upon standards by which we operate and maintain the system? Both clarity between the city council and staff, but really most importantly, clarity and expectations across the community about what service and level of service we're providing through the system. I think once we, once we address and we're excelling in that space, then we can talk about, at least from my perspective, then we talk about what is the future vision of the system and how do we, how do we ensure that we're rightsizing and maintaining and building and creating the type of park system that best meets the community's needs and also is most responsible to the taxpayer dollars that we use to do it?
Yeah. Because when I look through all of this, there are some parks, so to take Crystal Lake.
See, I said I might regret the example.
If we're ever going to do something at Crystal Lake, we need to do a vision for what we need that park to look like. We can't just replace broken stuff out there. If we're going to do something, we need to have a vision for what that needs to look like. For that playground, because Hugo and I have visited all seventy-six parks, that play equipment is awful. And some of the picnic shelters are awful. The grills are rusted. Yes, and there are some benches that are really bad. But I want, if we're going to do something, that's a lot of acreage out there. We could do something really wonderful, but we need to have a vision. It's the same thing with La Clebonne across the street, not the athletic part, but where there's a lot of acreage, a lot of green, but I don't think we are programming it correctly. So those are the things that I want to see. What is it going, what's the vision and how do we program all of that? There are a lot of broken stuff out there. So the other thing in understanding your one and two, you know, if we go to Alomagnet, you have one and two, there's twenty-three thousand, but at the same time, before we do any additional things out there, Greg and staff, I want to understand what Alomagnet's going to look like. So instead of just saying, do the one and two replacement, and you have the one and five at two hundred and ninety-four thousand. Before we spend any of that money, I want to understand what it's, what are we trying to do and what's the vision for that? So I think there's a lot of work that yet, that needs to be done.
Yeah, I think this is a good basis for establishing what work has to be done. And I, and I'm, you know, Garrett and the team has a process for stuff that's immediately needs to be replaced for safety reasons, for reasons of, you know, we need that service still and needs to be provided. But I, we would encourage you to definitely do a vision or a master plan for all your neighborhood and all your community parks.
The community parks.
Yeah, specifically, because those are your major attractions. So before you make major investments in those, it's always great to have a vision because where you put the playground today may not be the vision in the future. So if you're going to replace the playground, let's make sure it's going to go where it's going to go. And I think you've, the city's done a pretty good job of that already in some of the parks they've rehabilitated with regards to, like Red Oak is an example, where the playground's going, where the pickleball courts go. A master plan was done for that and those were set in place, so that kind of helps protect that vision. So I do agree with that. That's a very, that's a very useful tool, for sure.
Mayor and council, clearly that's going to take some time.
Yeah.
And I think it's also important for us to be really clear, both with you and with the community, that doesn't mean we're not doing anything, right? The, the next immediate step is a very important one in terms of ensuring the right foundation to move forward, and that's making sure that your 2025 through 2029 CIP, that ten million dollars on average over the five-year period of time that you invest in parks maintenance, that certainly those early-year investments are reflective of the data that we have collected through the plan and what we've heard from the community in terms of starting to address, not only reviewing the CIP to make sure that the plan, the plans are aligned, but also making sure that we're putting the right money in the right places for now, as we do the continued work to, to study and inform some additional sections of this parks, parks plan that then will help us to start really working on vision for the system as a whole.
Yeah. Because one of my pet peeves when I was out there, and I'm sure Garrett has told you, do you know which one it is? Which one?
No, which one?
Kelleher Park.
Yeah. It's a great park.
So.
Yep.
I'm glad that you captured the photos.
Yeah.
Because what is out there is awful. What does that mean? Is that, do we not care about that neighborhood?
Right. I think it's, definitely this begins to identify all these priorities within your community. You know, a lot of the park system plans we do for communities go through this process. We start off with this phase that we've done, we move into the operations, maintenance, recreational programming, and then we begin to vision and master plan based on all this data, because this data that we provided here and the next step will help to clarify what those vision master plans become in the future. So you can't really have all that starting forward without understanding kind of this background stuff, this and then the next phase.
I'm glad you took a picture of that volleyball court.
Yeah.
It's all broken down. Nobody would want to play volleyball on that court.
Correct.
And then the benches are really bad, so I'm glad you put that there. Yeah, we have a nice trail. But before we do anything, Garrett and everybody, I want to understand, from the engagement that you've done with the neighborhood, what is, what's the vision for that park? Not just replace some of this stuff that is really bad, but I really feel bad that it just looks to me like we don't care about that neighborhood. So.
And to your, to your point, Mayor, we already have, again, our, our team is already working on addressing immediate issues. So beyond even the next steps that we've talked about in terms of lining, aligning next year's capital improvement plan, we have a list of, I believe it's a hundred and seventy-five items that our parks maintenance staff right now in public works are about halfway through in terms of addressing immediate, both safety and some aesthetic needs through the system. So I'm very confident that, that we have the right people with the right intentions and the right attitude to, to start using this data now. And the, the bigger picture, as we talk about vision with the community, that's going to continue to take some time, and really that's okay. We've got, we've got good people who are well-intentioned in terms of addressing those immediate issues even now, as we work through the 2025 budget process to realign our capital improvement program, that then will give them additional resources to go out and address some of those condition one and two items that, that have been addressed here.
Yeah. Thank you. And please understand that I know, Greg, that you're trying to fix a problem that's been decades in the making. Okay? So I understand all of that. I also understand that we don't have a level of service or standards in place. So what this, what this plan does is really had informed us about what is needed and what we need to go through. So Hollow. Hey, Tom.
Hi.
Hello.
So Hollow Park is a park that a lot of in-home daycare service use the playground. But there's sort of a man-made trail that goes down into Kelleher and people cross through some of that. And when we visited, and I talked with some of the childcare providers, they're sort of, sometimes don't feel like the park is safe. So I know we have poles up there for some cameras, but I also know that I don't know if we, you know, because I ask, what standards do we have in place? Because I think Hollow is a neighborhood park, correct? It's not a community park.
That's correct.
And I know that your cameras go up in community parks. Is that correct?
Typically where there's community assets and facilities that need services, either for security or other reasons. Hollow Park in particular, Madam Mayor, has some infrastructure, lack thereof infrastructure and primarily electricity throughout that park since it is such a large. But we are working with vendors to identify solutions, long-term solutions that could utilize those poles for providing some services in the park to address those concerns.
We have broadband? We don't have any of our fiber going along?
Wireless technology will support the use of cameras in the park, but the challenge is the electricity to, to power those components. And there is no electricity infrastructure in that park currently near those locations. And, but we are working on some unique solutions to accomplish that for a long-term solution.
Yeah, and perhaps what we need to also understand, when do you start to deploy some of those? Because I look at it because you talk about safety in parks. So when I'm talking to childcare providers with a lot of small, little people, I want to make sure they're safe. And I don't know what standards we have.
Mayor and council, a couple of things. First, what I would say is cameras can absolutely be part of a solution and part of the puzzle to ensuring comprehensive safety from a, from a parks or a park user perspective. I would also say that, that perhaps more important than cameras is the relationship that our police department has with neighborhoods, right? So using this example, I know that there was, there was interaction and conversation between our community engagement and behavioral health unit in the police department with that particular neighborhood on some of those particular issues. And that is, from my perspective, again, not to discount the importance of continuing to expand cameras and other, and other type of assets that might help us, but really, that's where, that's where those safety needs are best addressed from, from my perspective, and certainly a commitment that we want to make sure is aligned as our park staff work through the leadership team with IT, the police department, to make sure that we're addressing the holistic safety of the amenities and assets and facilities that we're offering to the community.
I'm happy to hear you say that mass surveillance is not something that is dear to my heart. So like I'm, I, I am not going to shed tears over not surveilling our citizens in every single park. I'm completely good with that.
Yeah. I just want to make sure that those parks that are being used a great deal by childcare providers, and when they say that sometimes they don't feel safe, then I want to understand. But right now, I do understand that our community parks are where the priorities are, but not neighborhood. And I believe Hollow is a neighborhood park. So those are, just going through all of that and looking at all of that. The other part is because, looking at trends, you talk about the different trends. Cricket is a trend that's coming up, and cricket needs both sides because of the way that game is played. And I think Hollow is one of the parks that we use for cricket. Now, in understanding the acreage of all of our parks, we'll also understand in programming for those kinds of activities that are now trending up. So I'm going to be looking for some of that because there, I see some of the parks, because some you had acreage and some you didn't. And it, but how do we look at some of those programming? I'm going to shift to trails because trails is one of the important activities that people want. So you had identified how many batuminous miles of trails that we have in the city. So that was good information to have how many miles we have. But what you didn't have, and I'm interested in knowing because I've walked the natural trails inside Terrace Oaks West and East, and I don't know, and I think down in the, beyond Cliff Fin and in the, not coming to me, I can't see it. The area where it's the wildlife preserve. So is that, we don't have any batuminous when I've gone back there. That's all natural. So do we, is that the next step, is to understand how much natural trail we have? How many miles?
I'll let Garrett answer that, but yeah, it was basically a lack of information that we couldn't provide an accurate number.
Yeah, because you didn't have an accurate number.
Yeah, it would have to be mapped in some.
But you had a number for the bituminous trails.
Yeah, mapped in some way or form to be able to demonstrate accuracy in the document.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we actually, our, our, our park map that is online, that's interactive, will have all of our major trails GIS'd with their mileage and, and stuff, including things at Alamagnon and Terrace Oaks. The Minnesota Wildlife Area down there is, that, that doesn't belong to us, so that wouldn't be an asset that we would, that we currently have in, in a plan like this. But we, you know, we recognize that we have.
People walking.
Yeah, people walking and whatnot.
They're making natural trails.
Yeah, but it's not an area that we maintain either assets there and/or even take care of the trails or anything like that. But yes, in, in Alamagnon and Terrace Oaks and things like that, we absolutely, we produce maps and things like that for the community and whatnot associated with those too.
Yeah, because Black Dog, we have some really nice walking trails down there along the river. And goes into Eagan if you're going to want to bike. And I believe right now, depending on how you bike through, you can get to St. Paul. Only it's, some of it is not great because you're on 13 going down into, when you're crossing 13, that's not good. But it's not ours, but it's a way of, you can bike all the way into St. Paul.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, one of the things that, that staff has discussed, just by way of information, this week, we've actually started department meetings on the capital improvement plan for the 2025 budget process. And one of the things that's come out of those discussions, early on, Public Works, Engineering, Parks, Community Development, through the team's conversation, has been the need to perhaps shift our perspective, not only in terms of taking care of what we have, but really being more curious about what the community needs in terms of the trail system. Sidewalks I would include in that, certainly. Mayor, to your question, natural trails, to really better understand what we have, what the community wants, and to really play out the council's vision and preference for off-road trail amenities to better meet and best meet the needs of the community. So I think that's something as we work through the budget process this year, you'll likely hear us talk with you more about, is an interest in further studying, better understanding what the community is saying that they need from a trail perspective, really coming up with a, a smart plan for not only how we add amenities, how we add trail or sidewalk miles, but also how we're maintaining, not just short-term operating, but long-term maintaining those, those trails and that investment that the community has already made and potentially might make in the future. So something that we expect to come back to you and talk with you more about as we look at the 2025 budget.
Is Rolling Meadows, because it looks big, but it has limited assets, so it'll be interested, I'm interested in finding it out because when you.
Madam Mayor, in one of the early on.
Because Rolling Meadows, look at how big it is. But we only use a small part, and when I walk that, yeah, that's not all good.
Madam Mayor, in one of the earlier slides, we talked about our 76 parks and over 1,700 acres in the park system.
Yeah.
Less than a quarter of those acres are actually maintained. And when I talk, that's mowing and having amenities in them. So there's a significant amount of our park system that's really natural area that.
Those are all natural areas because I remember going over there and there's.
Yep. And, you know, and that's part of, you know, part of the things that we heard in the park system too, is that, you know, people really enjoy our natural areas that our parks provide as well. So it's a balance of, of things, but, and, and that goes back to the operations and maintenance study is how many acres are we actually maintaining within the park system? What's the process for that? What's the right number of people? How are they spending their time doing it and all that kind of stuff? So, yes.
Okay. It's a great plan. I'm going to ask one thing when you do the next one. On your table of content, can you put the page number so where I can find it? Because I need to do my own tabs. So I could find it.
I think we could also add tabs too.
So I can find, so I did all my own tabs. Yeah, it'll make it easier, but I know your table of content was really, but I couldn't find the pages.
Yep.
For community parks, for neighborhood parks, for many parks and natural areas.
That can definitely be added.
Anybody else have any questions? I'm sorry, I, I was just, because it's been something that I have been very interested about. Well, it's that our community, if there is one thing that they're so passionate about and that they require us as their elected officials, is that we have $73 million invested in these assets that belong to the people. And we are the stewards. And what I like, Jenny, I love your, your report. You talk about being good stewards of the people's assets. So that was a, that's, we'll hear about it when you do yours. But that, yeah.
I get it. I live right next door to a park, I get it.
Yeah. And that park is, only has a couple or two, you have one playground, it's a pretty large, but not.
Playground is used extensively.
Yeah, but.
People in there up park all the time.
Yeah. Do they picnic there?
They do sometimes. There's a, a young girl soccer team that practices there. Part of the Burnsville Apple Valley Hockey show up there quite a bit playing over in that park. You know, there's a lot of, a lot of different uses happen over there.
Well, that's good.
Yeah, but I did want to say, this is really a good report, very extensive. I, I know you're going to be programming operations, recreation programs and all that coming up, but we had to know what we have. And I think you did a good job of identifying what we have, did a good job of identifying assets. If we were just to maintain them, this is what we have to do with these assets, that may, and I understand that may change once you start identifying programming that you want to do, but it's a good starting point for it. It's like, it's like building a complex or anything else, you got to have a starting point. And this is very, very extensive and very well thought out. And I love the fact that you engaged the, the community in all this and you engaged our entire community in all this, as many as you could, as a, at least a percentage of our population. So it's a good job. I'll be curious to see what you come up with for, for recreation programming and your operations and maintenance and how you're, now that we've identified all this, how do we take care of it going forward so that we don't get the, I look at some of these, I've been going through these parks and some of them have great reviews like Nicola Commons, there's nothing wrong with this one. But even Kelleher, 80, 80-some percent of that park is good or according, according to this, as far as assets go. I mean, you might disagree with it, Madam Mayor, but according to this report, 80-some percent of this park is in pretty decent shape as far as the assets go. So there's work, and I know there's work to do down, well, you can laugh, but unless you, unless you just read this report. It's not funny, it's 80-some percent, so.
Well, for me, it's, you know.
I know, I know you, I know you want to take care of Kelleher, and I know that, but the report tells me as far as assets go, the assets are in pretty decent shape down there. There are some things we have to do and maybe the soccer field or whatever, whatever's going on in that park, I never get over that one, so I don't know. But according to that, this, the assets are in pretty decent condition. Am I wrong? Did you just misstate that?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we have lots of parks with, that have a number of assets that are in really great shape and some that are in poor shape. I think the difference is if a park has a concrete slab that has a crack in it and that's a level one versus a volleyball court, that's a level one, right? Like it's, it, sometimes it's the, the type of the asset that is in condition that has to also be taken into consideration at the end of the day. And, and, you know, Kelleher Park is one of those ones that their major assets need some work, right? But there are a lot of minor assets throughout the park system that are still in very good shape and whatnot and a great trail system, but nonetheless, we have a lot of work to do and a lot of things to figure out, so.
And I get that.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't feel like any of these parks are failing, they just need our attention.
Kara, do you have any comments for the consultants?
I would really like to commend staff on the GIS survey because that is an undertaking that I don't think most people can appreciate, how difficult and time-consuming that is, how tedious it is. And I also really don't think most cities do that. I think cities want to get to that point, like cities recognize that that is a best practice to aspire towards. And the fact that you got us there, that is incredible. And all staff deserves to be commended on that. The information that that will give us, the ability that that will give us for good decision-making in the future cannot be overstated. And that will help us for short-term planning, long-term planning, and, and for years and years to come. But again, this is a monumental effort. This is no small undertaking. And I, I sincerely thank you for doing this because this, this gives us a concrete foundational starting point to make really good informed decisions. This council cannot make good decisions without great information, and you've provided us that great information. So I'm excited to see what comes forward with this. Beyond pleased, I will give crap to other cities now that they suck again and we are awesome, because in this, that's absolutely true. This is incredible. Thank you.
Well done. And to staff and Greg for your leadership and getting us to have all of these different plans put together because it makes our work done in a thoughtful way. And then we understand what the cost is for all of this. And to our consultants, thank you for engaging our community and using different languages so that they can be a part of this process. And over 2,000 people took part in this process, both online and in person, and also through surveys. So the methodologies that you used was very comprehensive. I like the fact that you also went into elementary schools, into the high school. When we did partnerships for tomorrow, we did the same kind of thing. And that gives us a lot of good information because as we go along, some of the students who are in elementary school and in high school will understand their input and the value that they gave into designing the parks for the future. And so thank you for all of that. But Greg, to you and the leadership team in making sure that we have these plans, this is the first of what, seven plans that you have coming before us? And so we will have some good information to do the work that we need to do in the next few years here. So, but thank you. This is very good, very comprehensive, just some things so it makes it easy for us to find things, but well done. And I like the layout where we have one, two, three, four, and five, so we need, need to know what we need to focus on. But when I was looking through all of this and I saw you, Terry nodding your head when we need to have a vision for each of the parks. You have a, need a vision for the comprehensive look at the, the park system, but for each park, what does that, we want that to look like because it serves different functions. And I'll go back to Crystal. But yeah, because there is a lake, there's a beach, there's, it could be really spectacular we do there. So thank you very much, Greg, to you and our leadership team. Nice work. And to our consultants, thank you for your work in doing this. So more to come, I understand.
Mayor and Council, thank you very much. This is absolutely the result of the strong team that we have and the effort that everyone puts in together to the benefit of the community. So appreciate that feedback and certainly more to come as we work through the budget and the next year as we keep you updated on the additional work, as we vision out the system and do the things that we've committed to do.
Thank you. And thank you so much. Okay, we'll move on to department reports and for the budget. And I think, Mr. Vandals, you're up first, information technology.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. Thank you for having me here tonight to discuss and update our strategic plan as we go through the budget process for 2025. I'll be brief in my statements, but I will make time for any questions that you have along the way. Just as a revisit of who we are in IT, we provide strategic technology, services, resources and assets that help our overall team here at the city deliver exceptional services to the community. The IT group is made up of three primary areas, technical services, which covers our daily operations, our service desk, mobile services, and telecommunications assets leasing and management of those assets. Then we also have our application services group with GIS. And we've talked a lot about GIS, but it's those GIS tools and infrastructure and skillsets that our, our group helps deliver through the organization to provide services, services to the rest of the department, organization. And then we have also infrastructure and engineering services. That's the, the small team that focuses on our core infrastructure, our network, electronics, servers, storage, all the widgets that make us operate and, and make things work along the way. As part of the strategic plan that we reviewed last year, we've made progress and we are working through those items and we still continue to focus on priorities that were laid out in that strategic plan. Those include, as I mentioned earlier, service desk. We've implemented new service desk tools to help us enhance services, be more responsive, and provide our group, our staff, the tools to access the services that we deliver. We also continue to deliver applications throughout the organization, enterprise-based applications like ERP, Recreation Management Platform, Document Management Platforms and others. And we continue to integrate, build integrations between those platforms as we roll out new solutions throughout the organization. We also continue to drive forward in our GIS strategic plan. We have about 225 milestones that were identified through a five-year plan in GIS and we've been moving those processes forward. And as an ongoing activity, we continuously improve and replace technology and implement new technology through our alignment with our IT capital improvements plan. And one of a growing focus also that continues to be part of our strategic initiatives is improved system security. Not only, we talk a lot about physical security, but we also have to talk about system security and data security as we move forward in any initiatives and activities. Also, as part of this process, to help us become aligned with the resources that we continue to need and the areas of operations that we need to make sure we're doing effectively to continue to move our strategic priorities forward, we are starting an IT assessment to identify gaps in the IT operation and help plan for future resources through staffing analysis. That process is just starting here this summer and we anticipate bringing back the results of that process later this year. In addition, we have been working on an IT technology plan that identifies all the assets that IT owns, operates and maintains, the condition of those assets, and very similar to the parks plan, we'll be back and forth in front of the council early in 2025 to provide that information and identify how it aligns with the IT CIP and what we need to make sure happens in future CIP years. We continue to focus on where we're going and the strategic plan continues to focus on an investment in and operating and maintaining technology, and I'll talk a little bit about each of these three items. We are going to continue to optimize services and operational maturity and we're going to continue to boost employee innovation. And we're going to continue to boost employee innovation, knowledge, and resourcefulness. How are we going to do that? Our investment in current technology, we want to provide the tools that the employees need to do their jobs. We want to enable innovation and responsiveness to the community using those tools by making sure that the tools that they have work and operate well. And then it also provides us a security and reliability as we continue to operate and maintain those tools that staff will utilize. As part of that, moving forward, we're also going to continue to optimize our services that we deliver. We're going to continue to adopt mature, modern operating standards based on IT industry standards that are in place. And we're going to continue to focus on enabling consistency of services, better service delivery to our groups. We're also going to make sure we minimize human error as we move forward in these optimizations. And we're going to continue to transition away from traditional IT break-fix modality and focus on how can we automate more and leverage more automation tools, again, to create consistency, standards, and minimize human process errors. This, as a result, will help us for the future as we want to be consistent and accurate in the data that we collect and report on, and as we deliver services to staff in different groups. One example of that is, as part of our new implementation of our service desk in 2023, we were able to provide more responsive, enabling staff to use tools that are part of the service desk to provide a better response in times of emergency or urgencies. What I mean by that is staff, IT staff are on call 24/7 for those services that operate beyond regular business hours. And through the process, we've automated a way for staff to notify us and get a quick response time within 15 to 20 minutes of contacting us after business hours. And since implementing that service, we've had no less than 94 urgent contacts across the organization just in about a year's time. So that gives us some abilities now that we didn't have previously prior to some of the investment in those tools and times where we can be more responsive to the needs of the organization after hours.
So you want to reduce that time? So is 24 a baseline that you want to continue to reduce those after hour calls?
We want to be responsive, so we want people to be able to contact us in need after hours. Our goal right now is a 20-minute response time. And we want to continue to look at if that's adequate enough or not.
Okay.
But it's a starting point that we have right now. And we'll continue to engage departments as we deliver those services to identify if that's appropriate level of service or not appropriate. And that's part of this modernization process that we want to continue through. And last, part of our ongoing needs, we're going to continue to increase the awareness of the current systems we have in place across the organization that staff use and have in place for their business units. And we're going to do that through leveraging additional staff training on systems. We're going to continue to engage vendors to analyze the way we're using the systems and make sure we're using it in a most effective and productive way. And then we're going to make changes that will help us better execute and utilize those systems to improve not only staff knowledge of those systems, but also how we can deliver services with those. Some of the ways that we're doing that is through additional training through BU. IT sponsored nine courses in 2023 through BU on different top subjects and items that we hadn't done in the past, and we're going to continue to do that in the next two and more years. We're going to continue to focus on specific business systems with the departments that have either identified a need to do that or where IT has identified a need to help improve the use of certain systems. And many of those are ongoing efforts, and many of those are going to be ongoing revisit of those activities over time. It's not just a once and done type of service, it's a once and many times service. As we go through our strategic plan, we do continue to have challenges that we're trying to address. And these are future challenges that we want to continue to be aware of and focus on and address. But there are, the challenges today that we're presented with that are most prevalent are the shorter life cycles of technology. So that increases the need of more replacements, the need for different, more funding, additional training, additional skills development for staff. We want to keep up on that critical training as much as possible and growth opportunities for our staff as we replace that technology. Cybersecurity mandates and risks continue to increase. Many are out of our control, of course, and we have to be responsive and reactive to those. And so we have to be able to have some flexibility in how we deliver the services and funding that's needed for, to address security. And of course, our, one of our successes, but it's also posing current challenges, our success of using GIS resources and GIS toolsets and GIS data. We've got a very great group of GIS experts here in our organization and led by Matt Turan, our GIS coordinator, who's part of IT. And he's challenged with time and resources and the ability to accomplish everything that the organization is asking and in using. And we need to address that through future technology plans and resource identification. An additional challenge is project management resources available to us to deliver projects and to deliver new technology. Not only using project management resources from the vendors and the contractors that we regularly utilize, but also having some internal resources that our well-skilled project managers are knowledgeable in the organization and can help us collaborate with the rest of the organization as we bring forward projects and our resources that are ongoing, consistent, and standardized. So those are some of the challenges that we continue to work through. Very common, similar challenges, I think, to many other groups within the organization. But we want to continue to highlight those and how we can continue to work on improving those challenges. One of the processes that we're going through right now that I mentioned earlier is an IT assessment to identify IT operational gaps and IT resources needed. For 2025, we do not have any resources identified, staffing resources identified in the budget request until we have that assessment completed. It's most likely that we will bring something forward in the 2026 budget process. And then we want to continue to realign non-IT services within the organization. So things that I would call or categorize as non-traditional IT services that are now becoming IT services.
Such as?
That somehow we're getting involved in because as departments buy things or bring things into the organizations, they somehow connect to the city's network and they connect to different things, and the IT gets involved in those processes. We want to be mindful of those. We want to work with the departments to make sure that they have what they need. But we also want to make sure we identify the responsible parties that take on those items and make sure that we can work through that without burdening IT resources to maintain those systems and work through the departments that may need to take on more of those responsibilities or work through third parties that can take on some of those responsibilities.
Okay. Any questions for Tom?
You're like, "And done."
That was an abrupt ending, and I apologize for that.
Any, any question?
Do the blackjack dealer.
Any questions for Tom?
No, I'm kind of interested in this partnering with Community TV for new broadcast system.
We are in need of some changes. Our broadcast system is 10-plus years old.
Yeah.
And that, I think, is contingent and dependent on the facility's design process.
Yeah.
And although it's an identified need, we're going to have to make sure that it continues to be identified in future replacement plans.
Okay.
Thank you.
Kara, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions. This is, this is truly, this is excellent. Actually, I do. So I know some of the departments that interact with residents. We're looking at having a system where people can just book online and do virtual meetings and that kind of stuff. But I don't remember what became of that.
I'm not sure if you're referring to maybe what we did during COVID processes with a product at that time to book contact with staff.
Right.
I forget the name of the product at this time, but it was a curb stop product.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We continue to have staff interested in online booking capabilities. We haven't moved forward or identified any platform yet to do that.
Okay.
But if that's identified as a need for those departments, we can definitely work with the departments to bring something forward. There's lots of opportunities and options out there.
Right.
And we have some internal tools that can do some of that today, but it may not be as comprehensive as a department may need for the public contact.
Right. Yeah, and I remember some feedback from residents on how convenient that was. You know, there wasn't like, you know, the calling back and forth to find a slot and, you know, just humor, human interaction that way, right? But they thought that that was just like super easy, worked really well.
Well, and that gets to one of the comments I made in our plan where we can identify internal systems that may have that ability today and look at if they, can it be appropriately utilized and trained on so that staff can use those tools better and more effectively? And where they don't meet those needs, then we need to look at third-party options that may be something we have to bring forward in future plans.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Really nicely done. And also, the process of how you all are reporting this year is better than last year. Now, everybody is on the same page, reporting the same thing. So when I look through all of the reports that, like for tonight, I see what you're doing. And it's really nice to understand what's not going well, where you get to the challenges that you spoke of. Because in those areas, now we understand what some of the challenges are. And, and then so when we look at the budgets and when, and I like what you said, that in some of the resources, you don't have any staff with 25, but perhaps with 26, but you're looking at your organization, your group, and to see how you're going to look at those three areas that you identify as what IT is all about. So I thought that was well done and having an overview of all of those things and how you align with other departments and how you deliver those services to each and every one of them. But, and then you also talk about what's going well. And I see everybody else is doing the same thing as well. So it's, it's really good information. And now when we look at the budget and I see what you're asking for, then I think, are you going to also have a plan? Is that, is the IT comprehensive?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, one of the six original capital improvement studies that we had shared with you is an IT, a comprehensive IT plan. Again, assessing our infrastructure from an IT perspective, what we have, what condition it's in, and what we need to do about it.
Yeah.
Tom is also working on an operational assessment that you'll actually see in an upcoming meeting to authorize an agreement with a vendor to help us really fully understand our operations. And that will inform, to Tom's point, those 2026 placeholder positions in the IT department. Want to make sure that we're effectively using resources and putting the right people in the right place at the right time. So that will help us do that as well.
Well, the reason I also ask that is because when we're having the city hall and police, what are some of the technologies so, and let's do it right as we continue to move forward. So understanding what is needed to have a fully well-equipped city hall and police and how it's going to connect to our other facilities like Fire Station 1. And then when Fire Station 2 gets built, that we have a very comprehensive plan in place. And it's going to change because that's one of your challenges. Things change all the time, software change, upgrades, and all of those kinds of things.
Madam Mayor, to that point, the current IT capital plan, five-year plan, we anticipate changing significantly when those projects move forward. And identifying the items that may need to be changed in that plan to accommodate those projects.
Yeah. Yeah, I really appreciate the 13 points and what's not going well, but also what's going well. So nicely done. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And also, like, you know, so you've got, so I look at everybody and I say, there are three things we're going to get well done this time around. So we look at the end of the year, when we have our last quarterly. I'd like to see how the needle is moving on those three things.
I'd be happy to provide you that information.
Thank you so much. Okay, nicely done.
Thank you.
Okay. Michelle?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a little update here for you at the city clerk's office. Our office exists to carry out regulatory and statutory duties of the city. Some of the things we do, provide a great voting experience, administer online licensing and renewals, and facilitate access to local government, such as advising people on how they can speak at council meetings or how to apply for commissions or for elections. What we're working on now, improved communication of the renewal process. This is kind of a, to assist with the transition, to be fooling online with our licensing, facilitate data practices and record retention processes. We are trying to promote transparency with elections through community engagement. There are some new laws, expanding early voting, like from six to 18 days, additional weekend days for absentee before the general election also. Partnering with Dakota County to provide that male absentee voting service. Of course, our goal for the year is to complete three successful elections in 2024, finalize the improvements to our business licensing process, and revise standards and improve records management. One of the ways we're looking to do that is to update our current record retention schedule. Successful elections means we promote transparency, understanding, engaging the community to inform and educate voters. Improving business license by continuing to utilize technology, improve services, alleviating some of those paper or resource intense processes. This includes online licensing and appeals. Records management will update the workflow process for online data requests and record retention and continue to facilitate organization training. We'll do this through the BU program. Some of our challenges, difficulty recruiting election judges. It's not necessarily just the number of people that we need to recruit, but sometimes the diversity of those election judges. We're looking to seek out more judges that represent our population. And also, we have encountered some difficulty recruiting diverse party of judges. Changes in election law and the new requirements, and of course, the legislature always gives us some new updates every year on how we can better run elections. And helping employees understand the record management process. We're going to do this by delivering projects and experience to the organization in ways that utilize our individual strengths while providing great service. And we've realigned our team to support the needs of the organization and community.
Any questions for Michelle?
Just one. As I'm looking at what's not going well, what council policies are you talking about being updated? What council policies are you talking about being updated?
The policies and procedures manual. Similar to the city code updates, we're looking at making more plain language. It could very easily be three years.
All joking aside, that might actually be the case.
That was a joke, by the way.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Gustafson, it's a great question. One of the things we hope to replicate to Michelle's point is something similar to what we accomplished on the external kind of legislative side of the city's code. We've also recognized in that project that there likely is going to be the need for a broader kind of policy-oriented conversation, right? There are certainly some legislative policies of the city council, but there also is a lot of operational stuff mixed in. So we're going to come back to you and talk about how we manage that and make it clear to staff what those expectations are and where they're coming from. Part of that is also a result of our corrective action plan and the work that we've done since last August to address some of our purchasing and authority issues. So you'll hear more about that even in the next month or so as the city attorney comes back and talks with you about the compliance review that we discussed at the conclusion of the agreed-upon procedures report that you heard about a month ago.
Thank you.
Kara, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Okay. Well, it's good to know also what's, you know, I always look at what's going well, but also look at what's not going well. And so, but I like how the reports are now outlined and you see how many people and who's doing what. You did the same thing with all of that. So very good. So the next report then is finance. Alyssa?
Yes, thank you. Alyssa Ryan, my instructor here. I'd like to also introduce Adam Blom, our new budget manager. He's here in the audience tonight. He's been a great addition to our team. I'll start with who are we? Finance exists to provide stewardship for all public funds, to provide services to the community today and into the future. Our major sources of revenue are property taxes, grants, and intergovernmental aid, utility revenues, and fees and charges. Where are we now? We perform detailed accounting and auditing of city funds. We provide multiple-year financial planning and budgeting of revenues and expenditures. We maintain financial records and reporting in alignment with requirements. We provide support for grant accounting and reporting. We oversee debt management and capital financing. And we provide financial advice and support to other city departments. Where are we going? These are our three most important things. We're going to continue to enhance the CIP and budget processes. And our new budget manager will be a little piece of that. We're going to maintain and implement practices to promote financial sustainability. We're going to enhance our service to the organization and the community. What does this mean? Enhancing the budget and the CIP, budgeting makes our priorities a reality. It's important for us to balance capital and operating needs with available resources. Promoting financial stability, practices including financial policies, internal controls, and standard operating procedures work together to build a strong financial environment. And enhancing our service, we are committed to working alongside staff and the community to provide great experiences through customer service, training, and technology. How are we going to do these three most important things? To enhance the budget and the CIP processes, we're going to make improvements to the process and increase our communication internally and externally. We're going to support and advise departments through the budget development, and we will incorporate capital studies into the financial planning. To maintain and implement practices to promote financial sustainability, we lead the financial statement audit. That's something we do every year. We review and update internal policies and procedures. And we're going to continue finance-related training for the organization. Enhancing our service to the organization and community, we're going to build relationships with departments and partners. We do that already, but we're going to continue doing that. We'll review and evaluate our ERP system replacement and other technology tools. The ERP system replacement is our biggest item in the five-year outlook for CIP. We'll continue to evaluate and implement the positions identified in the organizational analysis. Our current challenges, additional state and federal grant opportunities, compliance and reporting require more time and resources. We have increasing numbers of software and systems require additional support. There's a lot of behind-the-scenes integrations that happen when, Tom mentioned, other departments select softwares and things. And oftentimes, those have financial implications and involves the city or the finance department. Standardizing procedures takes time to implement. That's one of our current things that we're working on. And we'll get there. How will we use our resources? We use your resources with accounting and audit, budget planning, and records and reporting. 2025 structure. The following positions will be integrated into the finance department. These have been identified in the organizational analysis. A grants coordinator position is proposed for 2025, and a financial analyst position proposed for 2026. Any questions?
Well done.
You copied Tom on that one.
This will now be a staff thing.
I cheaped all of you guys, didn't I?
It does.
Yeah, it's nice to see how you can compare. So Alyssa, on the page that says, who will do what by when?
Yes.
So I know that this page was improved. So I see you there.
Yes.
Yeah. But I'm wondering, on all of these actions, how is this so? Because I see Jenny has a lot of activity. And so is finance leadership yours?
Finance leadership is, Jenny is still an important part of our department and our financial function of the city.
I understand.
You haven't put her in there yet.
But you guys are saying, who's doing what?
This was our 2023.
I'm thinking, Superwoman's doing everything.
No, it's a real team effort. And we're, our whole department is taking on different roles. We've had a lot of transition in the last year, year and a half, and we're.
So I'm glad this is updated?
Yes.
So, you know, you can see your role in all of that? Yeah. And the actions on what you guys are going to be doing when? So I'm seeing that all of this is.
Yeah. Alyssa was kind of starting to say that these were the 2023 to 2025 plans.
Yeah, and I'm seeing these are all 2023. So will we see the 2024, 25?
So in our strategic plans, there are three-year plans that we are, like a lot of our updates are happening in work plans. And we're still working through kind of the three years of these plans. We're not necessarily making changes each year to the plan because of, because they're three-year plans. So we're definitely working through, you know, they're working through the 2024 items now. And obviously, our department presentations are part of kind of sharing those updates and kind of where are we at with our 2023, some of our work and what's coming up. But the actual plans aren't being revised annually because it's intended to be a three-year plan. So some of that's why you see Jenny.
These are just activities.
Yeah.
And so there are 23 activities. And so, but you already identified the three things that you're going to be working on 2024. So that's already been. So I was just wondering if this page is going to be updated with how you're going to be looking at all of your activities within? Because you're already starting that because your report says that you're looking at all of that.
Madam Mayor, members of the council. Sorry, go ahead, Alyssa.
Oh, I was just going to say, this will be the published copy for this year, but we have our detail of that as we're working through our plans with our department for 2024.
Yeah, because you says, how do we get there? And you have it all outlined in 2024 and 2025. So I was just wondering if this page gets updated to match what you have outlined here.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I made the decision alongside the leadership team in March, just given our capacity as a team and the reality of the world that we've been managing through, that these plans would not be updated this year on an annual basis. Instead, I gave department directors each the opportunity to decide for themselves and their operation amongst their team if they would be updating holistically their strategic plan or maintaining it on a three-year basis as it was intended last year. I think most of the team has decided to do just that. So Mayor, to your point, we're kind of operating off of the three-year plan that in finance, you'll see on page 12 and 13. And then the leadership team's work plan details out those 18 commitments that we're actively measuring and monitoring at the leadership team level. And then I think it's important to note, as Alyssa has pointed out, that each of our departments have work plans, internal action plans and progress reports that they manage and maintain to accomplish each of those things. So that's the, that's the plan for now as we align and manage our path forward.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. It's good to see what your progress is going to be, what you're working on for '24, what you have in sight for '25, '26, all of you. And then you identify your resources and all of that. So yes, it's always good when I can look at a plan and I can say, okay, this is what finance is doing, what IT is doing, on the same structure within that, your organization. All right. Any other comments, thoughts? All right. So we don't have any other plans to come before us this evening? And if there are no other comments to be made?